I don't know, but for some reason that song gets me hyped, ready to get started with the show. So hi everyone, welcome to the show. My name is Brian Bockus. Yours will never be unless you were born from somebody in my family and they named you me.
I'm Jamal Smith. I'm glad to be back for my on assignment for last couple of shows. And welcome to show, what are we on? 105. And we got?
Tony Raines, Tony Talk Show, which is today. So super excited to be here and have our fabulous guests from the Altadena Town Council. Let's see if we could, oh wait, I gotta go.
They're never gonna put you on the spotlight like that.
Nick Arz.
At home with Nick Arz.
At home, on location.
We all at home, they just don't look like it.
Yeah, it's all good. It's all good. So thank you, Nick, for agreeing to come on. I'm so happy to have you here today. I think we're gonna have a full hour. We have a lot of discussions and we'll have a really good time talking about what's happening in Altadena, what the Altadena Town Council is doing. You all were also awarded a grant. We'll talk about that and plans for that, those funds. And just get an update. So super glad you came on today. So tell us a little bit about who Nick Arz, Arzzen is, Arzzen is, and what your role is on the town council and then we're gonna get started. Cause I also know you're an actor.
I was, yeah, yeah. Think was always is, right? I'm a politician, so there gotta be an actor. About Nick Arz. That's right, sometimes. It's an easy transition. Nick Arz is happy right where he's at right now. Loves Altadena. I love to, I love that I'm talking to you today. I love that I'm working for our community. It's something I was raised with. The 62nd bio would be, I was born and raised in Iowa with hardworking parents. A truck driver for a father and they showed me what it is to volunteer, what it is to step up for your community. I kinda, as any teen, threw that out and said, no, I'm all about me. I live my life and eventually started having children and found my way back to that and found my way to Altadena. And moving on to the town council was a no brainer. I just wanted to make our town as strong as possible. I have a husband, so we're a queer family with four kids and we wanted to make sure we had a diverse community and we wanted to embrace that community and uplift that community. And diversity isn't just the marginalized community you live in, it's the entire marginalized communities around you. Because together we're stronger. And I sound like I'm running for office, but I'm not. But that's, that's where I am today.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where we are.
And that's the thing is, it's about who you are, right? And you're just sharing who you are and what is inside of you. And that's what's so important. So, and I love that. I love that, you know, you say it's about all of us because it really is. You know, we see all these protests happening and what's happening to our brothers and sisters of other cultures, right? And other heritages. And if we don't all stand up together, then this will be the blueprint that they will use all over the US. And we will be in an authoritarian or dictatorship in no time if we don't say no to fascism and no. Because there were not riots, there were protests. Yes, there's always bad actors in anything. And those people should have been arrested, whether it was by SARS, LAPD, CHP, whomever. I don't believe in the, the whole thing where they get on these freeways and block them. You know, you're trying to disrupt, but do it peacefully. You know, like Martin Luther King and all of them did. It's fine to march. But this country has a history of violence from the very beginning. And how they deal with things is violently instead of peacefully. And I personally hate that. As you know, I'm a veteran and I stand for our constitution and democracy. And so all the foolishness that we see now in this stupid parade that's happening Saturday. Oosa, I will not even let myself get upset about the ignorance that is coming out of 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue right now. But, but when it comes to our own community and our closeness in Altadena and what's happening, tell me a little bit about what your role is or what district or area you are representing on the town council.
You bet. I'm gonna piggyback on what you were saying, Tony. Absolutely yes to all of it. And I also really appreciate, and this is part of the scenario, is that you need to appreciate other people's way to express their disappointment and their fear. And I with you do not agree in the violent aspects, but I will go back. And traditionally it took multi-pronged efforts, you know? I mean, I'm going back to like, during the AIDS crisis, we had ACT UP on the streets angry and doing their thing and people were upset about that. That's not what represents our community. Of course it isn't, but that's a segment of our community and let's embrace it, you know? I definitely know violence, no looting, but if you're gonna get angry and raise your voice, that's not what I do. But I need that, I support that and I will stand by that. So I think that's a good segue into the council. The council is made up of, you know, really unique voices that all, don't always agree, but need to find a way to come together and fight for our community. I represent what's called 4602. So a quick lesson. Altadena separated into eight census tracts and they're exactly what you think. They're created through the census. So the census says there's a number of people here, let's split it somewhat evenly. So those tracts run through Altadena. I represent second census tract 4602, which is between Lake and Fair Oaks from Mariposa up to the mountain. So it's one big rectangle. And an interesting and sad side note is that that census tract in all of the districts and census tract of the fires was hit the wor, the hardest, 90%, just about 90% of that census tract is gone. 98% severely damaged. So nobody's back in my census tract. So we have a communicate, we have a town council meeting every month. And you can do a census tract report. So I obviously had nothing to report because everybody's in the same boat pretty much in my census tract. And the last thing I'll say, you know, town council has one goal, pretty much one job. And that is to amplify the voice of the community. And to let the community in reverse know what's going on from the county. They, they relay info from the county, but they don't speak for the county. Sometimes we're in a position where it seems like that. Where we're talking about and talking up a county program that might not be perfect, but at least it's something to help. And there's confusion of, oh, so you're supporting the county. You know, to the degree of getting their info out, absolutely. To the degree of anything that could help somebody, absolutely. So that's kind of our one job. And if it isn't communication, it's land use issues. And that's another committee that lives on the town council and land use will always deal with anything that pushes against the codes or needs special permissions. That's the only reason it would come to us. And lastly, I'll say, we serve basically as an advisory committee to the supervisor. Ours happens to be Catherine Barker, but we basically, we make no decision, no legislation is set within the council. We only make recommendations. And I will say, those recommendations, all my time in my third term now on the council have always been listened to and held up by the supervisor. So I just sit in a position where I know we've been heard. I don't know why. I think it's because we're a big voting block, to be honest. But for whatever reason, we are taken care of traditionally. So we'll see, we'll see how the cards fall these next months and years.
Yeah, big, uh, big voting block, big tax block. Property taxes, we put a lot of money into the county. And so, um, but you're right. So you and I are both on some of these Facebook pages for Altadena. And I say that because, so you know, I'm very like cut and dry, almost black and white, but I know there's gotta be some gray areas. I said it on the show yesterday. I don't automatically assume as a homeowner that if something happens to my home, the government's responsible to take care of it. Because they're not. Now, I do understand that yes, this was a natural disaster that no one ever could even imagine or saw coming. But for so many people to have this kind of entitled attitude that the government should be, the county and the state of California should be paying to rebuild their home, to me is a little bit insane. I still can't wrap my head around it. Are you frozen? No, you're good. Okay. And we freeze, so I wasn't sure. But for me, um, I gave an example yesterday, like when I put my solar panels up on my roof a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago. It's my responsibility to call my insurance company and say, hey, I have panels now and that changes what I pay. But if I don't and do that upgrade, right, and pay a little extra, then if something happens to my house and those panels get ruined, guess what? They're not gonna cover them, right? So that's the same with whether it's earthquake insurance, fire insurance, flood insurance, whatever. It's up to us as responsible homeowners to make sure that our policies are intact. Now, I'm not gonna speak harshly about anybody because I don't know anyone's situation. I'm not, and I'm gonna give everyone grace. But there are people that don't have policies altogether. I know specifically of a young man that lived not far from me. We're on, our family home, my parents' home was on Wapello at the end, at Mount Curve, right? But somewhere right up around that area that he inherited the home from, you know, grandparents down to parents to him. And I think his insurance had gone up. Was it, I don't know if it was 7,000 a year or something, for whatever reason. And he was like, I can't afford this. And he let it go. And so now the fires came and he doesn't have a home and he wasn't insured. That kind of situation I hate to even hear about. And I would want to work with our group, our foundation, others in the community or whatever, so that when we do come back, maybe we can have some kind of a fund in Altadena that would help people with that type of stuff with insurance, right? We also wanna have and host a, just like we hosted the Builders Town Hall, wanna host something for financial planning so that you do have your insurance that's correct for your home. So that you have your home in a trust, right? And so that if it was passed down, because as we have found out, so many people got these homes passed down, but the deeds are still in their great grandparents or grandparents' names, right? And they never transferred it over or put it in a family trust. And that shouldn't happen. And the bulk of people that that happened to or are in that situation are from the west side and the more historical side of African Americans, right? And so we need to make sure our community is aware of what is the best possible way going forward after they rebuild, right? For those that are staying and are going to rebuild. So I know you guys take a lot of heat and, and things that I've seen in some of these pages is, is that yes, you all as the town council either aren't hearing the people or don't speak for the people. Or, um, you know, they don't represent us or whatever. And my thing is whoever your census, census tract representative is, find out, go on the, the website, find out, email and call that person. If you have to do it every day, until they hear you or say, hey, can we meet in person, sit down and talk? You guys are in the community. I have seen you all numerous times in the community at events. Two or three times at Long Island Park and, you know, other places. And so I just wonder how often you get phone calls or emails directly to you for the people that are in your track. And I know a lot of people in your track that lost homes saying, hey, I wanna know what's going on. And I know that most times people don't go to town council meetings or even log on online until there's an issue. And so if you're involved, right, and I always say civic engagement has to start at the local level. We can't just talk about voting for a president every four years. If you're not involved in your town council, your city council, your county government and those elections and speaking up and the people know you when they see. Every time I see Catherine, she's like, hey. And, and literally I've called her supervisor a few times. She's like, just call me Catherine. I'm like, okay, whatever. You know, I still say, hey Catherine Barker, I mean, hey supervisor Barker or whatever. But she's like, I tell you, just call me Catherine. I'm like, I'm not doing that. But anyway, if they know your face, when you, you saw me at the park, I didn't even see you. You were like, hey Tony. So you guys know my voice, you know my face, you know my name, whatever, right? And so I know I could call you, I could call Melissa, whoever, if I had a real issue. That's what has to happen. And so how often do you get those type of engagements from people, whether it's a call or an email?
Yeah, well, all of that. There's a lot. Let's start with social media. Social media, I don't pay as much attention to. In, in regular times, I had some high school interns that would kind of troll social media. And I would encourage them not to engage because that's not a road you wanna go down. But to report back, what are they thinking? So just because you don't see us on social media, doesn't mean we're not checking it out. But we're making a point of not engaging because we need to reserve our energy. And, and I'm always speaking for myself, but I know there's other council members who feel the same way. And let me backtrack. All the council members are volunteers. While we are elected officials, we work to get elected and then we work to uphold why people elected us. And again, that goes back to just to relay the information. I think we have a responsibility and what I do here past the anger and past the disappointment on social media, I try to still hear the message. People will take that opportunity of going, okay, I get to disconnect. I don't have to listen to Tony because Tony's yelling at me, so I'm gonna step away. I try to say to myself, okay, just like you said, where are they at? You know, where is their trauma, especially in this time? Where is their anger? Where do they feel like they, they're not being heard? And let me push that aside. And like you, I try to give them grace. I'm not always as successful as I'd like to be, but when I can, I can hear their message. And here's what I think we're not doing that we could do better. We need to uphold organizations that can do the things that we don't do. It's not in our lane to hold these resource fairs. It's not in our lane to, unless it's county related, our lane is just to relay county information and to amplify voices. So you'll see a set of folks trying to gather that, those voices. You'll see me put surveys out trying to see how people feel. It's a tough time right now and you've got multiple members like myself on the council who lost everything. You know, who lost our houses, who lost our safe space and our home offices. So we're in a position where we're just trying to get on the ground as much as possible and get your voices as much as possible. Here's where we're failing. And that's important because I think anybody who doesn't point out where they're failing is not going to improve and is not going to do a better job. So I try to look each day without any beating myself down about it. I try to say, what, what didn't I do? Because I can figure out what I did and hold myself up. That's fine. My family's good for that. What we're not doing is upholding the organizations and creating a space for them to amplify what they do so that people can go to those. We're not gathering the information in a more efficient way so people don't feel overwhelmed with information. So they can look at it and figure out which sites do I go to? And I'm working on that right now. I'm taking over. I was the communication chair and during these past five months, we created a comms team because I realized I can't run this communication committee. On Monday night, I'm gonna take that back and we have a four-step program and structure in place to figure out, how can we reach the regular Altadena and tell them, this is where you go, this is who you trust. Vetting is a big thing. I'm not gonna tell anybody who, who to choose for a builder or who to choose for a lawyer. I, I, I'm not gonna do that as an individual, let alone as a council member, because I am not gonna be responsible for a wrong suggestion. I'm trying to figure that out myself. So I'm still working on it. So to your point, I'm gonna get back to social media. It goes back to those angry voices of any protest. You, you need those loud voices because you need that point and that subject matter to be pushed in the forefront. Now, when it becomes toxic and they're only going to stick to their own narrative, there's where I got a problem. If I can talk to you online in the same space where you're throwing out these accusations and mistruths and you can get real with me, that's when I respect you. That's when I appreciate you. If you're only gonna do that offline in a private message, I just don't have use for you. You know, and I don't say that in a disrespectful way. I literally have no use for your nonsense. You either get through it and get through and get factual or you, you get on your own way. So no, I, I don't dive as deep into social media as I used to and I shouldn't because it's extremely bless you. It's an extremely useful medium when it's used the right way. And the right way isn't just my way. The right way is sometimes angry. The white, the right way is truth. And the right way is if we can get to the truth and if you can ask your question, not yell your question, then we got something going.
I like that. Ask your question, not yell your question. Yeah.
Because nobody hears. I mean, if you yell all the time, people are gonna start blocking you out. It's, it's, I watch out for those people. They are hurt and they wanna be heard. And I just ran into someone in the supermarket who spent 10 minutes yelling at a camera crew that was talking to me about something that had nothing to do with what she was bringing up. But I waited for her to work it out and then we started having a real talk, right? Because sometimes you just gotta wait. A friend of mine told me, I get stopped in grocery store parking lots a lot. And I, I was telling my friend that grew up with me in Iowa, um, I feel like I'm not doing the right job because I feel like every time they bring something up, I give them the answer. Hey, we already took care of this. This is already in place. And then they go to a new problem. And then it's, it happens again and it's a cycle and I spent 20 minutes with this person. And my friend pointed out to me, Nick, try not giving them the answer right away. Try engaging them, letting them talk and either talk it out or letting them know you're gonna look into it. And then come back to them the next day and say, hey, here's what I found out. You might know on the spot, but when you throw it back at them, it dismisses their complaint. It makes them think, you're not listening to me. You're just giving me a quick answer. And that happens to them all the time. With me, I like to think it's me really trying to help them. But they had a point. This person wants to be heard. And if I immediately shut them down with an answer, they still feel shut down. So I'm trying to make more of an effort of listening, processing and giving them not just my quick answer, but more nuance to it, getting more info. So I really answer what they're asking. Not just the pat answer that I think will work, but I can get them more info.
That's really good. Because then you think about it, you come back to them, right? You circle back, whether it's later that day or the next day. And if there is some anger that they are expousing or just needing to be heard about, listen, because so much in society now, people don't listen. And then you're not.
That's a great point. And I'm so glad you said that because here's what I would compare it to and it might be a terrible comparison. People might hate it. But I would compare it to talking to a drunk while they're drunk. You don't talk to an alcoholic about watching the alcohol intake while they're still drinking. You don't talk to an angry person about calm, being calm while they're still angry. So I'm not trying to play a game with them about, you know what, I'm gonna hold on to the answer until tomorrow. I'm trying to actually get them to hear and listen. And I can't teach them that. Look, I just went through four teenagers. They're out the house. And now I know what that was like. So I'm not gonna teach anybody and I'm not gonna treat someone like a child anymore. But what I am gonna do is try to give them grace and try to step back and not be condescending and not have all the answers, even if I think I do. And I often think I do. And that's okay.
I often do. And, and it's funny because Nick, I'm here several times and I'll bring people on and they'll be experts and I already know the answer. So I literally, Brian and Jamal, in the very beginning had to check me a couple of times, not on the spot. They showed me some grades, but in the after, in the green room later, they were like, Tony, we know you know the answers, but don't ask somebody and then give the answer. Let them answer. Like, oh dang, you're right, I did it. It's like, okay, stop talking, be quiet. Let whoever is on, who I bring on as the expert actually talk. Cause even last week, I had said something with Colonel Avichoff and he was like, Tony, I might as well give you my job cause you already know. And I didn't say the answer, but I was like, what about this? And I understand this. And then I let him explain, but I have to, cause I love researching and finding stuff out. But even yesterday after the show, I was on the phone call and I remember saying to somebody, we can lead a horse to water. We can't make them drink, right? Because people don't, a lot of times people want you to give them the answer. But like you're saying, which is put a pause on giving them, they have a chance to process what you said to them, to calm down if they're upset. And they might even go and research and have the answer by the time you get back to them, instead of using your.
Their answer might be better than ours. Their answer might be improved. And even if it's not, they found it on their own, then they can own it. You know, I can guide them toward it. But this is such a good point because I think conversations miss that part. And I, I mentioned, we're not lawyers because a lawyer's job is to know the answer and that's why they're asking the question. You know, and a lawyer's job is useful because they, they need to get to the truth, right? So that's their journey to the truth. So I'm not knocking lawyers. But I will say, what we need to do is have more conversations. You have to show up to learn, not show up to preach. You know, let the preacher preach and you can learn. So you have to show up ready to learn. And then if you've got something to share and you're asked about it, you can share that. But if you're ready to learn, that means every person you talk to, even somebody you think you know more than, is gonna teach you something because they can. And this town and my job as a council member and my role in life, my role as a father was the same thing. I need to find out who's around me and what, how they contribute. And I need to make use of that. I can't belittle them and say, I've, I've got it all right here. I need to recognize I've got organizations and individuals who can make this town stronger. And I need them more than they need me. I'm just sitting in a spot where I'm amplifying the voices. Now, if I can connect them and if I can make use of them and if they can become more powerful than I ever wanted to be, then that's my goal. You always gotta make sure you're watching the person next to you. Raise them up and they're gonna take you with them or they're not. Raise them up.
That's absolutely right. And just, I will put our shameless plug in. Obviously you're on the show today, but as you go back and you're talking about the communication plan, you can easily say, look, we have Altadena Talks, right? And they have a breadth and a wealth of information on their YouTube. Obviously this is literally episode 105, right? And so, and we're not stopping. So whether someone gets on and searches town council, they will find you and Melissa because you two have come on, right? If they search for builders, they will find all the builders that we've brought on the show that came to the Builders Town Hall on March 8th, if they, and can, can listen to them and reach out to them, you know, if they want to. Whoever it is that we bring on, if somebody really wants to be in contact with that individual or that office or whatever, we make sure that we bring people on, but that in doing so, we also have their contact information, right? Like this is where you go, this is the website, this is the email, this is the phone number or whatever. In order for people to be in touch with who they need to be in touch with. So, um,
let me mention on that, that, that's, that is solid. I mean, Monday night, we'll focus on, we know that reaching Altadena is gonna take a multi-pronged effort, right? We know that that person is looking on social media, that's all they do. That person is looking online for blogs and great podcasts like this, that's all they do. We've also got that guy or that woman in the house down the way who's a shut-in, who doesn't get any information, who's not online. And only the neighbors know to knock on that door and say, hey, here's some info to knock on the door and say, get you out of town, there's a fire coming. So we need to rely on those networks, right? But those networks include podcasts, it includes, so what we need to do on Monday night as a council is start making the hard choices and, and, and you know, bruise some egos and say, no, this is the podcast we have to get people used to listening to because that can be their one stop shop. We can't, we gotta stop with this. There's 12 different places to go for your info. We have to decide as a council, what is our most trusted source for a blog? What is our most trusted source? It doesn't mean we have to shut down those other blogs and those other sources. We can still amplify them and offer them up as resources. But we have to not exhaust ourselves of trying to reach out to all of them. We gotta decide on four or five different trusted types of news sources. Get them to them, have a good media list, have a good email list that reaches every leader, every preacher, every block captain, every organization leader and trust them to take that one blast of info and disseminate it. So I've been working on that for a year or two. And out of the ashes of the Eden fire comes these people who are like, I'll step up. I've had two women put together my email list succinctly and it's ready to go. What I've had is manpower issues. I, I'm an exhausted volunteer and so are the council members. So again, turning to the community to do what they do best and that's whatever their lane is, PR manager, you know, whatever it is, turning to them, podcasts, you know, whatever you do that I can turn on to and amplify it, that's gonna what, what makes us move forward. Because it's not too late. We're five months in and yeah, it would have been great to have this January 7th and 8th. But we've got it now. We've got the opportunity. And just because we missed the five months, doesn't mean we can't push it moving forward. We gotta make it happen and we gotta make it happen efficiently. So communication is gonna tie us together. Then you and I are gonna be able to go, stop with the toxic, stop with the anger, stop with throwing things. And we'll have your audience listen. Yeah.
I, I think that that's really good and we definitely will partner with the town council. I believe Brian did our membership, the Altadena Talks Foundation membership with the town council. Uh, I know we talked about it, either he did it or he's about to do it, but I think he did it. And then I think that either way, even if you guys. And then I think that either way, even if you guys don't say, well, Altadena Talks is our trusted podcast, still send me whatever information, if it's a newsletter or whatever, because we go through and Jamal will be coming on shortly and we do the announcements. So if there is something new, if there's a link that you want people to go to this link, because segueing into the grant. We, with our grant money, we're told, we believe it's gonna be a hundred thousand, but it will be somewhere between zero and that. Whatever it is, we wanna give right back to the community. We wanna, um, give to renters who, you know, our renters have seriously been impacted. Not that everyone else hasn't, but homeowners, some have insurance, the bulk of them. Some renters have renter insurance, lots didn't, but still lost everything. And so we wanna be a blessing to the community and give that cash right back out, right? It wasn't, again, I didn't put in for the grant. I met Lisa the first Saturday up there at La Maltas. She put us in because I told her about the podcast. She watched some episodes and was like, I'm putting them in for a grant. And then she called me last week, like, Tony, you guys got a grant. But she told me the day on the 17th, when we did the opening, that she put us in one. And I was like, oh wow, thank you. So then, you know, she called last Wednesday and was like, oh yeah, and I think it's a hundred thousand or whatever. And immediately, when I got off the phone, I told the guys and we started talking about how we could get this right back out to the community. Once it comes, which will probably be next month, um, after the new fiscal year or whatever. And so we're coordinating some things now, right? So that when that time comes, we can announce it. We can say, look, um, please fill out this form. The three of us will review it because it goes into our foundation and we three are the board members of the foundation. And we will go through those and try to hit as many in the community as we can, right? To get that money out. It's not only going to be for renters, but we've already said a large chunk. We wanna be able to be a blessing to renters that have lost everything and are still moving once a month or, you know, whatever. And then if this can help them a little bit with that, then that'd be, you know, a blessing. And then there will be other, um, resources that we provide, right? Where it's okay, we're gonna give grocery gift cards, because people still need, you know, that are paying a mortgage and rent. Now you've got two. And then how do we feed our family? How do we put gas in our car? How do we? So we're trying to be very mindful of that. And we know that the fact we were blessed to be put in for and receive a grant is, is just going through us back to the community. And so what is it that Altadena Town Council, once you were notified, um, plans, if you all have talked about the plans of what you plan on doing? And are you at liberty to say how much you all are being given as well?
Well, um, first of all, yeah, I'll share what, what I think will happen, but I will stress that the council as a whole will make that choice. So I, I guess what I'm gonna put forward to you is what I'll propose to the council. We found out about the grant by someone posting online that it was listed on the Fire Aid website.
Last week. Okay. Yeah.
Our grant did not and cannot come directly to the Town Council. The Town Council is not a nonprofit or a government, official government organization. So we actually will never directly receive the money except through Rotary. And you and I should talk, um, afterward because it's interesting because I saw it listed on their website as 700K.
Correct.
Split between you, Rotary and us. Rotary, I wonder where the other 500 is because you're saying.
So we've all had that conversation because.
I know.
Cause Mark texted me last week on Friday. He was like, Tony, you guys got a grant? I was like, yeah, Mark. Great. And cause he came on the show too. And he was like, why no, we're limited to a hundred thousand dollars. And I was like, okay. And I said, he, he asked me how much we got. And I said, I don't know. But I was told on the phone, probably that hundred K, right? Cause we can go up to that. I said, but we don't know. Cause I still haven't gotten an email about it. And so he said, they were limited. But I didn't think, this is what we and Brian and I, I said, if we got a hundred, if Rotary got a hundred and Pally Strong got a hundred, maybe the balance of it went to Town Council, like 450, right? But, but then I don't know if Town Council and Rotary. I don't, we don't know. We gotta wait and see.
What I was told is that Rotary is getting a hundred, just split with Town Council evenly. So that means 50,000 is coming to Town Council. I know, girl, we're gonna talk afterward because there's a lot of questions and I like these people. Look, Fire Aid's getting a lot of grief because the questions are, where is this? I, I wanna get right to, and then we'll talk about Fire Aid. Cause I wanna get to what probably is needling at people. Yes, but where does that money go? That money cannot go to us as council members. We don't take a salary and we cannot take. There's no mechanism. Make that happen. So none of us can do that. But what we can do is exactly what you're doing. We'll, what we'll probably do and what I'm proposing and what some of the executive committee agree with, and I think all of them probably. And what our chair even pretty much brought up is that we should take 5,000 for communication efforts. As you and I just talked about the importance of communication, that means years of paying off our website, improving that website, maybe doing a mailing when people are back in homes in years, you know? So if we, we at any given time have about 2,000 or 1,500 in our Town Council, a bank account. And we just use that to pay off expenses, right? So we have, I've never known us to be, 5,000 would make us flush. And I would be like, let's just sit on it and spend it when we need it. Um, so we got that. The other, so the question would be, where's the 40, other 45,000? We wanna do what you wanna do. We wanna get it right back into the hands of Altidinos. And there's already the Altadena Eden Fire Recovery Fund, which applications are about to open up in the next week or so. And that is run by community volunteers. So we purposely found a way to push this out of the hands. We had an opportunity with GoFundMe in January at a lunch, saying, how can we directly help Altidinos? Because all of these funds are going to organizations that are then expected to help Altidinos. So we wanted to create a fund that was dedicated to money directly into Altidinos' hands. For whatever purpose, renters, um, home loss, home remediation, you know, whatever it was. We wanted to make sure money got directly. So that's about to happen. So this brings me back to firing.
And, and let me, um, I'm gonna do you like I do everybody else. Under your face says Altadena Town Council Vice Chair Nick Arndsen. And right above my head or to the Altadena Drive, Altadena. Cause I keep hearing you say.
Okay.
I correct everybody. We are not Altadena. We are Altadena.
Where does the word ALTA come from? So first of all, I think they're both right. And this is why.
I do know Spanish translation, alta above. We have never, ever, ever, ever called it Altadena, but I know a lot of people say it that way. So I'm.
Yeah.
I'm gonna put it out here like I do everybody that comes on the show. Cause they all say Altadena. And I said, we're not ALL, we're AL, Alta. So anyway.
It's funny, I would say, it's funny, I would say also, cause I'm like an Iowa boy. And if you know the Midwestern accent, everything would be Alta. You know, I would say Alta. And if you go historically to Altadena, Altadena, Altadena. If you go historically, it's hard not to say it, cause that's, I don't know where I picked it up. That's how I was told, you know, from the beginning. So in my head, I think, well, I, I think they're both right because historically farmers from the Midwest were up here doing crops and doing water reclamation and farmers would say Alta. You know, that, that would be correct. But historically, the word is Spanish, which would be Alta. It wouldn't be Alta. It would be Alta. So I think, I, and that's not why I did it. That's just me trying to put some justification on it. That's me thinking.
That's me harassing you. I harass.
Harass them like.
And I go, we're Altadena, not all of.
I know the guys are probably laughing because they've seen this conversation over and over, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
At least 50 episodes.
All right. So where do you stand?
It's a Spanish word, but we grew up saying Al because, you know, I, I got a dude named Alton Tally.
Yeah.
That I know. And I wouldn't call him Alton, but he pronounces his name Alton.
Yeah. Well, here's where, here's where I'm at. I would give more respect and credence to those who have lived here longer and called it the same thing longer. So I should start calling it Altadena as much as it would fill my soul.
Join the team of Alta.
Let's unite.
It's, it's, um, wait, stay here, Brian. Um, I think what you said, and I know you're, you guys are not going to put it through us or whatever, however, you're gonna give it away and however much you get. But we wanna partner with you. Like even if we do our event and have you guys be there at that time. Cause y'all may be blessed with gift cards or whatever too, because you were all impacted, right? Those are the impacted. But the fact is, and we're not gonna not give it to people because they're somebody. Brian was a renter who lost everything. Brian is going to be a recipient of the grant. Me and Jamal have made that decision. He can't as a board member to give it to himself, but we can make that decision. We've already made that decision. You guys that were impacted, because everybody will have to fill out the, the form in, anyway, regardless, including Brian. But, um, and it wouldn't be like, oh, because Nick's my friend or oh, because Nick came on the show. If Nick needed it or whomever, right? Town council member, they saw our form and they were selected because we wanna try to spread it out amongst as many as we can, right? Then so be it, right? You get it. Um, but at that time, we still wanna say, you know, in partnership with, right? And if it's the Altadena Town Council or whatever, we are doing this event. They are here representing their tracks, whatever. We still want to do things so that we are together.
Yeah. I think, I think the council will want to focus on making sure none of those monies go directly to all council members. You know, look, we, some of us lost our homes and stuff. We'll find other ways to get support.
Right.
There's such a, you both know how many ways there are. So as far as these funds, it's not gonna kill us to push that away from us. And the best way for us to push it away is to give it to an entity like the Altadena Fire Recovery Fund, which we have, um, into the code of that fund, no council members can be given money from that fund. We're not directly involved with it anymore, but it was important to council members, including myself, that those funds, that there's no tomfoolery and, and making, or money goes back to us. We're gonna find our, our support in other ways. And we're in a variety of different socioeconomic makeups on the council.
Right, right, right.
It was important to us as a whole, that as that fund was created and as it was handed over to the community in a very real way, the people who decide where those funds go are not the council. We have two council members heading up and making sure that those people, you know, are structured and run their meetings. They're setting a criteria and they're making choices based on needs assessment. So.
Correct.
I appreciate that, but I'm certain whatever funds we were getting, which if only it were 450,000, which is a whole other conversation.
But then that shouldn't be Pally Strong then, because Pally Strong is like us, an information resource.
Yeah.
And if.
We don't know what's gonna happen, to be honest.
We don't know.
Before you get that letter.
Yeah. So, so for those listening, what we're talking about is there was 700,000 as a line item. And under it was listed, who makes up the recipients of that particular 700K? What we know is that you're getting 100 probably. We don't, we don't have confirmation.
We don't know yet. Right. We don't know the number.
We're told that you're getting 100, uh, cause you're sharing that. And I'm told that we're getting 50 of a 100 package. So, so you're bringing up the round two grants info. So our question is, I didn't even know there was a fourth recipient listed. All I thought was us, you and Rotary. So we know that 200 of it is, so Polly Strong is listed, huh? Oh yeah. Okay. So I'm not trying to.
Their LA.
Doesn't have a podcast, but they do the communication piece too, within Palisades.
Okay. So I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus, but I'm just putting information out there. And you can make up your own mind, but let's look into that. Let's figure that, let's connect with Polly Strong and just get the, you know, get the 411 and, and find out. Is this the case? Cause if, if we're reading it correctly, that's 100,000, 100,000 and 500,000 left over. If that's what we get. But I do know, and you can speak for yourself.
Go on.
I was just gonna say, I do know that Town Council is not looking to bank whatever we get. We're looking to get a small amount that makes sense and get the rest into the community's hands. And I'm happy about that. If I were the community, I wanna hear that. And, and transparency is important with any of this and is required. So any grant money that's due to us, anybody can come and ask. They don't need to go on social media on some toxic. I can't swear, but some toxic post that says, are they taking the money themselves? You know, they, they don't need to do that. They just need to ask the question because we need to give the answer. Not because we want to, and we do, but because we're required to give the answer. So now you, the three of us are asking the question, where's that other 500K?
Hey, look, maybe, maybe we gonna get 250 each. I don't know, Nick.
I highly doubt it, but I love that. And if we do.
700 with three. The math ain't mathin'.
No, it's not. So, so maybe that up to 100,000 is wrong. I don't know. Or so, so I'm gonna tell you, when we first looked at it last week, when she called me, I was like, oh, we get 100. Oh, Pally Strong's getting 100. Oh, the Town Council and Rotary are gonna split the five, right?
Yeah, we don't know. We're speculating.
That's what my brain said.
So wait, how did you, how did you come to Pally Strong getting 100? You heard that from somebody?
No, but if you look.
No, we thought they were getting the rest. After he got 100 each.
Didn't. I thought Pally was gonna get 100 and then you two, Rotary and Town Council were splitting the five and it'd be 250 each.
Gotcha. And why were you thinking?
The reason I thought that, the reason I thought that is because if you click, go back, Brian, or if you click on what, I have it up too. What Pally Strong does, cause I already pulled them up. It says, one place resources for Palisades by Palisadians. And you can join them, you can explore, but it says, why we are Pally Strong. What they do is if you lived in Pally or want information or wanna help rebuild, this is your work in progress. And it says you can contribute. We, they have a donate button too, right? They're on the app store. You could scan it and it says, you're welcome to debate. But this is not the place for pointing fingers. This space should give enough energy, the motivation to get back on, on your, the town on your feet. But it says it's information. And it says, our mission is simple. Support each other and get back to living in our homes as soon and safe as we do. But I don't see where there's anything else that they do, literally.
So, so your assumption was based on they're doing what you do. They must be getting the same amount, right? And first of all, I wanna say, just for all of us, and, and you can agree with me or not, good for them. You know, I mean, good for you, what you do. Good for their statement. So they're pointing fingers. There's just, and this is a great discussion to have because it's a discussion having all up in all over town, where is this money going? And I go back to, just ask the question. Don't get angry. If Fire Aid and the Annenberg Foundation that's holding the money from Fire Aid is sitting on it, I believe they're sitting on it for a reason. Do we need it right now? We absolutely do. But if they throw it all at us, we're gonna have nothing in the fall, nothing in the spring. When all of your renters and your homeowners need to get out of their rentals and their home still isn't done, we're gonna need some support. So yeah, we could spend it all right now. And I don't think it would be spent wisely. I think it would be spent as needed, but I think we have to be smart. And I'm glad I don't have to make those decisions. And that's part of the reason that give, give 50,000 to the Town Council. Sure. Take this other 45 back, cause I don't wanna make those decisions. God bless you two for whatever decisions you gotta make, but I don't wanna be in that position. I don't wanna be telling which neighbor gets which. And so God bless the people who are making those decisions for us on that fund that we helped set up and now pushed aside. Because council's not in that business. We're in the business of lawyers, builders are handing money out. And.
Right.
I, I feel like council members, I agree that we're even touching it in any way and I get it. So we're just trying to push it aside as much as we can.
Yeah. So Brian, go back and pull up that, that Pally, we are Pally Strong, or where it is again.
Oh Jamal.
Oh Jamal, I, I wanna show you guys something. Cause I am now in the backend of Pally Strong. And Jamal, go all the way up to the upper left, next to Nick's head and click on the picture.
The picture or the icon?
The icon, picture, same thing at the upper left. Click right there. And look, we have access to the backend. And if you click under, learn more under leadership or all of that, they have everything, ROE forms, uh, debris remediation, rebuilding orders, environmental tag, uh, testing, financial concerns.
They're missing an E on that committee. Have a quick reader. They're missing an E on committee.
Oh yeah. List of lawsuits, useful insurance resources, Pally rebuild positions, school info. So they're back in.
That's a lot of people involved over there.
They got a whole.
This is all Pally Strong?
Yep.
Okay. So let me say, I don't know more. Okay. So first of all, let me say, hold, hold anger because there's always gonna be time to be angry, you know, get the facts first, right? And, and I'm looking at that and look, if they're doing that much, they may be a very different entity than what you are and what we are. Because they are in an incorporated area that needs these more philanthropic and private resources. So they may be encompassing a lot that earns them 500,000, right? That they need half a million. That they need half a million to do. So I don't know how, you said you didn't even apply for the money. And I think Rotary did on our behalf without us knowing. So that's great. That's awesome. And, and we're getting money and it's unexpected. But maybe they applied in a very specifically, they listed out what they do and what their needs are, right? So if they did that, they might've said, you clearly could use half a million and it would be used wisely. Or maybe it's BS and we're wondering why five hundred is going to the Palisades and not Altadena, okay?
Yeah, none of us know, but either way, once we get the answer, obviously, we'll know how much we get. You all will know how much you get. And if Sally gets five, whatever, we don't know because we didn't put the grant in. They might have applied for a grant and had specifics and details and line items and all that. We don't know, but I counted a blessing that we were considered, that somebody thought that the work that we're doing here is important enough to apply for a grant. This is round two. There is a round three. We might reapply, but actually apply this time for round three, based on what we give out, because there is going to continue to be a need. And if we can continue to be a blessing to the community by grant coming through us, because that's what it is. It's not just to us, it's coming through us, then so be it, right?
You're, you're saying we don't know and that's so important to point out. Because neither do residents and that's why there's been anger about where is this money going? So what they don't know is that they can have access to those answers. You know, and if they, if they would take a breath from their anger, and I'm not trying to dictate to them, because again, they're not my teenager. But if they just take a breath and they think about, I want an answer, how do I get this answer? Figure it out. These aren't stupid people. They could figure it out. But I'll go so far as to say, it would be nice if, when the money goes out, it goes out in a way that's more transparent. Because we're looking at a site where we, you, the three of us are debating, where is that other five hundred? Is it all Polly Strong? And if so, what's, what's the difference of hiding that? You know, why not list that specifically in that? So Fire Aid's doing a great job. Annenberg's doing a great job. And if we're looking for improvement, then yeah, as soon as you and I get this info, we can try to as quickly. This is what I said on Monday when the toxic posts were going out. I said, we gotta, we gotta get in front of this. And it's what we should be doing anyway. We should be transparent from the beginning. This is a point where we should rush because people grab onto a narrative and they won't let go. So let's, let's set that narrative. Let's, now that we know we got it, let's put the information out there and everything we know, and then let's do more. And that's exactly what our chair and what the rest of the executive committee did. We prepared a statement. By the end of the day, we got it out, we put it on our site. And, and it basically said, we're, we're trying to figure out what to do with this. And now we're going to turn to the council, because we have council members going, what? I didn't know we were getting this. What are you doing with it? That don't trust us as an executive committee. So we need to be more, we need to be more forward and get them to trust us.
It's funny because, you know, people have questioned us, right? And, and well, what is Altadena Talks? And oh, it's a little podcast that has like a hundred and fifty followers. We, we talked about this yesterday in the show, so we're not gonna get back into it. But I'm gonna just read exactly what this grant that was given to us that we didn't put in for states. It says, Altadena Talks Foundation supports fire impacted families in Altadena through sustainable recovery efforts and fire related podcast programming hosted by, they only have me on here. I think it was because of Tony Talks and she only met me. Although she knows it's Brian and Jamal also. With funding restricted exclusively to fire related podcasts. So we could use a whole hundred thousand for the next couple of years for the podcast and we're not going to do that. We've already stated.
I think we should. I think we should. I think it's great to get money back into the residents, but I think it's a worthy cause.
Well, we're putting aside money for the next two years. Greater portion of it. We've already said seventy five cents of every dollar we get is gonna go back to the community. So, uh, I even donated some of the, the GoFundMe money that was raised for me to survive to get this podcast and the nonprofit and all that going because actually, actually I didn't even use it for that. That's still sitting there in the bank. I use my own money.
People have questioned, why did we get anything? And I don't know that we got a hundred thousand. We just, we have not gotten the emails yet. We were just told it could be up to that, right? Means whatever it is that we get, we've already made a determination that we do want to be a blessing to the community. But technically, we don't have to. They're giving us this so that we can continue being a resource and having these podcasting. And whatever it takes for us to run that studio time, because we do now have a studio also that we can go to and that costs, right? By the hour, all kinds of upgrades that we need. There's lots of software, not just the StreamYard platform, but there is software in the background. Brian is constantly editing. I go out and my phone right now, I have no more space because when I'm out, just like Brian, we're constantly videotaping.
Drop your phone every week to the computer.
Exactly. And so, and so it does cost, right? And that's what they gave us the funds for, but us being from Altadena, Altidinians, we want to make sure that our community, and we know that there are some gaps. We know that there are people really struggling still. We know that renters were highly impacted and we want to be a blessing to them. So for anybody to even at any point question it, they don't really have a right to. Cause they gave it to us specifically for the podcast and to keep that going. But we are going to do what we're going to do and make sure that people are aware. And we will list on our foundation, um, website later, the grants, right? And we're gonna have different tiers. One might be a thousand, one might be two fifty, one might be three hundred, whatever. And we'll put the names under whatever they, you know, area they fall under. But like if you guys don't knock it off, you know, type thing.
And Stogie Man, you know, had a point about like due diligence and sharing the funds. I think that the point to that is exactly what you just said. They knew who they were giving it to. And I like to believe they knew that with Rotary, they knew that with us, Polly Strong, they knew that with you. They knew that we were going to be, we were gonna share the wealth, you know, that we were gonna sit on it. And if we did, we would just sit on what was needed, which goes back to, that's why some of these funds, they sit on it. Cause you don't know what expenses are coming. You don't know how big your podcast is getting. And the bigger it gets, the better for Altadena. You don't know what programs the council will put into place that still fall in our lane. And the more we do, the better for Altadena, right? And lastly, I just want to say, when people get money for something they'd been volunteering to do, I got no problem with that. Because number one, they earned it. And number two, that means now they're gonna be dedicated to it for a longer time. They were doing a great job and they were probably about to burn out. But if they get a salary, not only are they gonna be dedicated for a longer time and doing that good work longer, they're also gonna be beholden to that work. So they are also going to, I'm gonna check on them. A perfect example is Altogether. Altogether set up this block captain program and Altogether came together after the fire. I am so glad they got some funding and it's not a lot, but it's enough for me to feel comfortable. Okay, now I have some security. Now they're staying in place. Because their good hearts and intentions will have an expiration date. You know, there'll be a point where they need to feed their family, where they need to rebuild their home. And they can't put all the time and effort that they've been putting in. Some of us still do it anyway because we're idiots or we're in a good enough position. You know, my husband's an ophthalmologist. Yeah, so. But we get, I mean, right, we get satisfaction out of it. I mean, that feeds me. That feeds me to know my community's taken care of. So I'm not doing it out of just the goodness of my heart. I'm doing it recognizing that my soul is replenished by it. And then in the best possible way. So I'm not doing it selflessly because I'm feeding myself. So if these people are getting paid and they can continue to do it, I'm all for it. And I'm sick of people saying, you know, where is that money going? Question. Just ask the question. Don't get all, don't post it and get all angry, you know?
I think what happened is all these concerts happened, right? There was the, what was it? Grammys early on and they had QR codes and raised funds. I have no idea how much was raised through the Grammy Foundation. I do know this Fire Aid raised six hundred million. I believe, right? Was it six hundred million or a hundred million?
I can't remember.
No, I think it's six hundred.
Grammys or that is available to us. We can look it up.
Right. And then there was something when you went to that other concert.
Well, GoFundMe did wildfire thing too, and they gave out majority of the people that had accounts a thousand bucks. I had complained because I didn't see nothing. They're saying, then two months later, they sent me a thousand dollar gift card of my GoFundMe.
Oh, nice. Yeah, they gave us a thousand to the, the one that I opened. It was under my account because I've had GoFundMe for a while, uh, just an account. But it was for my parents and my sister, because they lost, you know, their homes. So they, but they did do that one thousand dollars. Hundred million, okay. So see, it's almost gone because they've already given out seventy five, if I'm not mistaken.
I guess the last one is, the last phase is probably gonna be the rest of it.
The, right, the twenty five million on phase three, whenever. And, and you could click on it and, you know.
Minus their administrative costs that they had to.
Right. So the thing about it is, um, even with them, because it's a foundation, they have to report that. And somebody can easily say, how much did this one get? And they have to tell you. It's, it's transparent. It's not hidden. We're not gonna be hidden. We're gonna be transparent. I've already said, I got the call and they said we could get up to a hundred. So I don't know what it is. We might get ten thousand, we might get fifty, we could get a hundred. We have literally no idea, right? And we'll find out whenever they send that email and then say, this is what you're gonna get. They already told me, we have your EIN for the foundation. We'll, you know, do whatever they do, deposit wise, whatever. But anyway, because they've got to email us, we gotta tell them our bank account, all of it. But, but we will come back on and say, here it is. And then when we start to do something from it. Now, if we get ten grand, I guess maybe we won't be a blessing to the community like we want. But we may still do something, but definitely towards podcasts. So anyhow, um, I'm so glad you came on, Nick. Like, I think I, I need to, obviously, we could talk for hours and we're almost. Eleven oh three, I'm not gonna hold you forever. So I'm gonna have to have you come back on. But, um, but yeah, this has been a great conversation, just, just that conversation. And then letting people know, because I didn't truly know the full role. Of Brian, why are you sitting there looking like that?
Because I was looking. Actually off of the screen when I'm doing.
I saw the site you're on, yeah. No, Tony, I just want to say, I mean, the service of a podcast like this and the money coming in to serve something like that is going to, the biggest thing I've been warned about from community leaders who had the same thing happen to them that we had happen to us, is that your town will turn on itself. And we've all witnessed that. And if we can just take a breath and we, we can connect on podcasts like this, if we can connect in different ways, I think we're going to, that's gonna help our community. And part of that is a service like somebody out there listening going, hey, I'm gonna do what they said. I'm gonna look up these answers because not everybody has that time and energy. And people have trauma brains still. And we can tell them, hey, the answers are there. And I, if I were them, I might go, yeah, they're there, but you got time for that? Because I'm heading to work and then I'm working until I'm tired and then I'm feeding the kids and then I'm going to sleep. When do you want me to look up this? So if somebody is willing to look it up and list it and we can put it all over the place, this is a great service. Somebody out there has that time. Somebody out there has that, that vision. So look it up, find it and, and get the answers. So people start complaining about where the money's going. The answers are out there. Somebody can compile it.
In my case, uh, I lost everything that I used to do business with. So the only thing I have that I can actually grasp now is this podcast. So I definitely take the time to do the research because I do not want anyone to be able to say that, no, you're wrong and this is it. Oh, here's the facts right here. So I can say, there's a link. You can go look it up yourself.
I will not bring anyone on or talk about something, Nick, that I have not vetted. Like I am the vetting queen. I am going to go and find everything out about you, your mama, whoever, no, just like. But I, I will, I will dig deep, right? Because I think we do a disservice to people if we talk about something on here or bring someone on. And we have not done our due diligence and we have not vetted people. I don't want you coming on here talking crazy.
Thank you.
I had a, uh, the, the, the town hall, the builder's town hall at my church. And when we were. And I had, you know, there were, there were people asking questions at the end. And one person, I was across the room. I said, give me a minute. I'm gonna let this lady, then I'll give you the mic. Gave him the mic. Somebody was like, Tony, come here. And I start walking and he started asking a question and asked something where my ear went. And I went directly back over to him and I said, give me that mic. If I didn't know you were gonna ask that question, I would not have given you this mic. I was so pissed off because it started with negativity. I had literally ten builders on this stage and the first thing he says is, we know all builders, just take people's money and da, 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 and don't do a good job. It was just so negative. And you're talking to my builders, first of all. And you might've had a bad experience because maybe you didn't vet your builder well enough and do your due diligence, but that is not every builder. We were talking before the show when you first got on about somebody that called me yesterday that's like, hey, can I refer my cousin to you because they're going with this person that's, I don't know, six hundred or more square foot. Anyway, did something, had a quote, oh no, had a quote. And then we're told, oh, and you have to have solar, because solar is mandatory. And added two hundred thousand on top for solar. And I was like, well.
Giving that much.
No, absolutely not. And I said, you know, I know, because I put solar a year and a half ago. I paid fourteen thousand cash for my fourteen panels. Your battery is, you know, separate. I didn't get one, but I am getting one. But because even when power has gone out, you still have within your batteries for a while, some power. So my neighbors will be out. I'll still have power for about an hour or so, right? Cause it's still there. But the fact is, like, I had people quote me twenty seven to sixty thousand for the same fourteen panels. Then I found this company, Mona Lee, and they were like, no, it's fourteen. Basically a thousand a panel. That included all the inverters, the installation, just everything, right? And so I was like, okay, I'm going with that. And it's been tremendous. My bill is cut in half, you know? Although, anybody that knows me knows how I feel about what the, the net metering three point O is. They are now stealing seventy five percent of what we generate and only giving us twenty five percent. So I have an issue with that. But I'm on, I'm on plenty committees about that as well as one of the two million solar owners in California. And they're gonna have to change it again, because if they're telling everybody it's mandatory, you gotta get solar, there's no way. And I tell people, look at last summer, as hot as it was, did you have power blackouts? Did the grid go down? And they're like, no. And I said, right, because all of us that have solar that are giving to the grid are keeping it going. So, is that kombucha? Okay, cool. I was like, he's just drinking it straight.
When I drink it in the car, I'm like, everybody must think I'm drinking a beer in here.
Oh, yeah, because it's about.
That's what I do with Bundaberg ginger beer.
Like, um, if they're saying that, and I told her yesterday, I said, mm-mm, it's not two hundred thousand dollars to add on top of whatever you're building for solar. And that would be a battery and a full roof. That's even with twenty, thirty panels. It's not two hundred thousand dollars. So she said, okay, can I give them your number? I said, absolutely, because that is just insanity. You don't include in the first plans that then you come back and tell somebody, oh, it's extra two hundred thousand. You've got to be crazy. No wonder people don't want to rebuild or think that they can't afford to rebuild. Because the prices that are being quoted are nonsense. We got builders saying six hundred square foot, eight hundred, a thousand. And the people, there's people that I brought on the podcast that are at three forty a square foot. Period. And plans have been accepted and permits have been issued and they are starting at three forty a square foot. So all this other foolishness, I'm like, builders are making it unaffordable, not the insurance companies and not the state or the county, the builders are. And that is a sham and it's, it's shameful. It shouldn't be happening. So, um, but yeah, you will come on again because we could talk for an hour or two. Have a really good time. Thank you for explaining what you do, what the town council really does. I think a lot of people might've gotten insight because they're not aware that it is simply to listen, convey that message in the correct manner to the supervisors, um, to the board, including our supervisor, who happens to be the chair, Catherine Berger. And then whatever decisions they make, they make. People have been getting on those Monday night calls, which is great. You are welcome to go to the board meetings. They're at nine AM. You're welcome to log into a board meeting, submit your comments or whatever. They're gonna listen to their constituents and then all of them are gonna get together and make the determination about what's going to be best, right? So if it's something you don't like, you do have recourse and you can go down there and you can talk to them. But then they convey or whatever you all hear, you convey back to the community. So yeah, I think that that's very important. I know that people are like, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna. so yeah, I think that that's very important. I know that people are like, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna incorporate and become a city. And I'm like, okay, it's happened already seven times and it didn't happen. No, we're not. We don't want to be a city. And I've said this to people, Nick. I've said, if you want to be in the city, move to Pasadena. Like, that's why Altadena's are up there. We don't want to incorporate. And then people don't understand what it takes. It would take at least a decade. The county would have to say, okay, we'll allow you to seed away from us and then take the money that they receive from our property taxes and sales tax. And say, we're gonna give you this as a budget. We'd have to have our own fire department or, and sheriffs or contract with them where now we don't have to contract because it's part of our property taxes. Then we would have city tax, county tax and sales tax. We only have sales and, and county tax right now. So I'm okay with that, right? But the fact is, and create a charter. That takes a long time and lots of lawyers and you gotta pay for that. And then have elections. Elections take a long time. You have to go through the county for those elections still. Um, the registered recorder, you gotta go to the secretary of state, get all of that approved. And I don't think people understand what it takes to incorporate. And when I broke it all down, I was told by the same person that you told the other day. What you said, and I said, you're right on point. Because she's very negative, her and her husband. But she was told, oh, well, we'll see how that works out for you because we're gonna be a city by twenty twenty-eight. And all I could do is laugh because again, you're so out of touch. You have no clue. All, everything that it takes to become incorporated, you have to have your municipalities or your water, for your power, for your gas. Um, yes, we have Edison now because we're not a city. But if you're a city, either you have your own or you still contract for those services, including trash and everything. And so to just say, oh, we're gonna incorporate because we don't like what happened with this event is not realistic. And I think people need to, um, get into reality and know that you can't just incorporate overnight or in two or three years. Because of a few people, even if it's half of Altadena was like, we want to incorporate, right? Again, ultimately, it would go to the county. They would have to agree to it and agree to give us a budget. And with deficits right now, I, I don't think LA County is gonna give us a penny to incorporate. It's, it's been tried seven times and it hasn't happened. So. We'll see.
Yeah. It's also, it's, it's, we're still in trauma. It's not a time. It's not even time. It's time when that type of stuff comes up, but not a good time to think it through.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So anywho, I will, uh, Jamal. Jamal, you wanna come on and do announcements?
Joe, I'll be like, I got spider webs forming under my.
He'll do the announcements. It's maybe ten or whatever there is. If you want to sit in, please feel free to sit in. If you absolutely have to drop, you can drop off, you can leave. You and I will be in contact after this because I'm bringing you back on. Such a great conversation.
I did gotta go. I have eleven o'clock meeting, but I would have stayed another hour.
Nick, thank you. I know I didn't pop on and communicate with you, but I really appreciate you coming on. It was great information, uh, that you shared.
Thanks, Nick. Have a good rest of your day. Uh, he said, all right, y'all. I love that, uh, Iowa. Um, so Jamal, we're gonna segue to you for the announcement. That was a really good conversation with Nick and I enjoyed him. So I, I, I will definitely have him come back on.
We found out a great many things that now if people who we actually shared the podcast to and the group would actually watch podcasts, then they will see what we're talking about when we talk to the Altadena Town Council. The, uh, Altadena Rotary Club, uh, anybody else we've brought on, Colonel, um, Abashaw and all of the other, you know, come on, we, we bringing people on here so that you don't have to go look for them.
Right? Like Thursday's show is gonna be phenomenal with LA County Assessor Jeffrey.
By the way, I forgot to tell them, um, if you wanted to reach out to Nick, uh, here's his, um, do I have it here? Yeah, here's his email for the town council. So if you wanted to reach out to Nick, by all means, email him. And, uh, I just want to say one more thing before, uh, uh, Jamal comes on. Uh, LA asks us our questions. Operators are standing by for you to put your questions up there.
Oh my God, I hate you. Questions.
It's easier to, it's easier to remember is LA asks us our questions.
First day that it came up, that's how I read it. And I was like, LA.
Isn't that, uh, isn't that, uh, Marcus's, uh?
And it was just like, oh my gosh.
LA asks us no questions.
My brain looked at it and, and it came out that way, but it did. And it was just like, and that's the running joke, LA assessor questions. But it, but it came out, LA asks us our questions, so.
Right. But yeah, LA assessor questions are, is what we need to have from you by Thursday morning.
No. No, by tomorrow. Because Candy has access and she's in the background looking.
Today is Tuesday, right? I said Wednesday night. You said no, by tomorrow.
No, you, you said by Thursday morning.
And then I said Wednesday night and you go, no, by tomorrow.
Okay. Anywho, yeah. As long as they get them, and let me see if any of, any have come in. Going Jamal, you can do your thing. I'm sorry. Announcements and I'm gonna look for questions.
Alright, today, we have. I didn't know what voice to use. I, I, I was confused because when my wife, apparently my wife enjoyed that voice when I did it. Because she slept like a rock. She was like, you must, you soothe me and, uh, put me to sleep. So I'm gonna have to read to her like a couple days a week. So here we go. So as we all know, the disaster recovery centers have closed. Uh, but we do have the Altadena Community Center available where FEMA, SBA and select county departments are offering their services still. Uh, this is Monday through Friday, nine AM to five PM and they are not open on the weekends. Keep that in mind. However, the LA County One Stop Permit Center is still located, uh, at four sixty-four West Woodbury Road, Suite two ten in Altadena. Uh, they have walk-in hours, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four thirty. And if you would like to have a consultation, uh, you can have an appointment with, uh, them at Mon, on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays from eight thirty to twelve thirty or Saturdays, eight AM to noon. Also, if you want an appointment specifically with Southern California Edison, they're available on Mondays and Wednesdays from eight AM to noon. And in order to actually, um, set up your appointment, you go to the website, recovery.lacounty.gov forward slash rebuilding forward slash one dash stop dash permit dash centers. And as we know, the, uh, the only dead, I'm sorry, only one more deadline that we're, um, you know, waiting on this particular point for those who actually opted out of having the US Army Corps of Engineers remove the debris or they didn't do anything. That deadline is June thirtieth. This is where you have to have your debris completely removed. And, um, again, it's June thirtieth. If it's not completed, your property may be declared a public nuisance. And if so, the county may go ahead and clean it themselves, but pass the bill on to the property owners. And if for some reason that happens and you don't pay the bill, they may actually put a lien on your property in order to recover the costs. So definitely take care of your business if you fit into this category. Uh, Cal Assist Mortgage Fund, uh, it's a state program that provides much needed relief from program, uh, from mortgage payments for displaced families whose homes were destroyed or left uninhabitable by the California disasters, uh, such as the Palisades and Eden Fire. So you may be eligible if your primary residence was destroyed or is uninhabitable due to qualified disasters from the first of January in twenty twenty-three through the first, uh, or the eighth of January, twenty twenty-five. Uh, you would meet the program. Um, also you'd have to meet the program income limits. You have a mortgage or reverse mortgage and you own a single family home, condo or permanently a fixed manufactured home, which may include up to four units. Um, if you qualify and are selected, the fund will pay three months of mortgage payments up to a max of twenty thousand dollars. And I'm sorry, guys, I'm gonna remove the, uh, fee, uh, or maybe I, no. Trying to remove the comments from the screen. Oh, there we go. Yeah, there we go. We'll go back to that other slide. Uh, so up to twenty thousand dollars. The funds never have to be repaid and it's free to apply. Grants will be paid directly to your mortgage servicer. And the program begins taking applications this Thursday, June twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-five. And funds are limited. And once submitted, applications will be reviewed in the order they're received. So you want to make sure that you apply this Thursday, the twelfth. And you would actually go to calissismortgagefund.org and click apply now to get started. Also a reminder, and it was mentioned a little earlier in the conversation with Tony and Nick and, and Brian, that the Altadena Community Meetings are still going on on Mondays, uh, from four PM to five PM. They're online hosted by Supervisor Catherine Berger, Berger. And, uh, they're on the YouTube channel, uh, with youtube.com at, or forward slash at County of Los Angeles Newsroom. So definitely get on those if you want to hear what's going on. Uh, today, um, is the summer hiring kickoff. It, it's located at Dollar Hide Community Center, three oh one North Tamaran Avenue in Compton. It's from ten to two. And, uh, they're looking, if you're looking for a summer job, come on out, uh, to the youth work, summer work, uh, hiring kickoff. Don't miss your chance to work with local businesses, nonprofits, LA County Departments. If you're in between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four, this is your moment to meet employers. Interview on the spot and sign up for the youth work program. You might even walk away with a job offer. Kickstart your summer with a great job opportunity. So the, some of the benefits are you get to earn seventeen dollars and twenty-eight cents per hour with a hundred and sixty hours of work experience and soft skill training. The, for eligibility, again, as indicated before, you have to be between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four or identify as, uh, foster or justice system impacted. Must experience homelessness or you're out of school, LGBTQ plus or from a Cal Works or low income household. So the requirements are that you need to bring your ID or social security card or birth certificate, uh, work permit if you're seventeen or younger and a resume. If you don't have these documents, they will help you gather what you need to get ready for employment. It's a great opportunity. So to RSVP, you, uh, go to bit.ly forward slash capital Y W J lowercase U N E and then the number ten. Or you can scan the QR code. It's a great program. And, yeah, and then the last installment of the summer concert series for this month is going to be June fourteenth. And the, uh, artist will be Dwight Carroll Quartet. These concerts are at, uh, again, Loma Alts Park from twelve PM to four PM. It's free admission at thirty-three thirty North Lincoln Ave in Altadena. I know we've gone to a couple or you guys have gone, uh, to a couple and these seem to be, uh, pretty nice, uh, events and, and pretty nicely attended. And again, we really are excited, uh, for the re, uh, or the grand reopening, uh, Fair Oaks Burger, which is June fourteenth. This, uh, Saturday from nine AM to twelve PM. Uh, Parks and Recreation and Juicy Little finds are bringing games. Uh, Altadena Library is gonna bring a van. And the Pasadena Humane Society, Hands and Paw and the Love of Animals are holding an adoption, uh, for dogs that were displaced in fires. It's gonna be free ice cream and sliders by Fair Oaks Burgers and fresh produce, produce provided by Food for Health. And also artwork done by Noah Hayton, who's a local, uh, member of Altadena, Pasadena. Next this Fri, or Saturday as well is the Dina Juneteenth provided by My Tribe Rise. This is at ten thirty, from ten thirty to three thirty at Metropolitan Baptist Church, which is located at twenty-two eighty-three North Fair Oaks Avenue in Altadena. Come celebrate or come out there and, uh, experience some joy, resilience and celebration. And then lastly, uh, Loma Alts Park on Thursday, June nineteenth, which is actually Juneteenth from twelve to one thirty, uh, they're gonna have the Fourth Annual Juneteenth Celebration. Uh, part of this will have the Altadena Oral History Project Review, which is, uh, faces of resilience told through words and photographs chronicling the African-American cultural legacy before and after the Eden Fire. And also there'll be the, uh, Ellen Garrison Clark Scholarship Award Ceremony, which is scholarships awarded to local high school students in the spirit of Ellen Garrison Clark. Uh, tickets before the event are thirty dollars and thirty-five dollars at the door. And you can purchase your tickets and RSVP at altadinahistoricalsociety.org or you could scan the QR code. Wow, that actually felt good. It's been a few days since I've actually done this. Uh, it's glad to have. I, I removed everybody and.
We're back.
Yeah. Welcome back. I'm glad to be back. And, uh, that was the announcements for today. If anything else comes up, I'll be looking out for new ones. And, um, man, again, great show today, Tony. It was interesting. If I can add, just the, the depth of the conversations that people are having about who's, who's getting the money and whether they, in, in, in their way, approve or not. First, the con, first the question was, where is it going? Now you know where it's going. Now you're kind of complaining about it or, or questioning. Maybe it's not complaints. Uh, but hopefully through the conversation that we've had today, and it's gonna require people to actually tune in and watch, right? Um, they're kind of getting a better understanding of what the money will be utilized for in terms of what we're gonna do and potentially the, um, chamber and the Rotary Club. Um, for the others, we don't know, but, uh, we know what we're gonna do with the money. And basically, hey, if you, if you're wondering, ask the question. Sit back, relax, enjoy the answer and, you know, just roll with us because we're gonna do right by our community because it is our community.
Totally, yeah. So we'll see. Again, we don't know how much. We don't know when. But whenever it comes, we're gonna do what we're gonna do and, uh, give back. We will reserve some for the podcast, which is technically whatever we're getting is the whole thing. That they are giving to us, but, um, whatever it is, she said it could be up to a hundred thousand. I guess that's. Don't know what it will be, but whatever it is, we will, uh, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Well, we know what we're gonna do. So that's the key. We got plans for it and, you know, that's, that's the bottom line. Oh, I forgot to throw this up here. I always take it off after Wednesday. With tomorrow at, uh, Fair Oaks Burger, uh, we out here is gonna be there twelve, three. They have a bunch of resources available. It's again, if you don't know Fair Oaks Burgers, uh, address is twenty-five sixty uh, North Fair Oaks Avenue. And we are again, are excited to, uh, have the grand reopening. Now, if you want to partner, you want to donate, uh, or somehow connect with we out here, you can reach out to missjuicelittle@gmail.com.
Yeah, they're also giving some special Father's Day baskets out that tomorrow as well.
Oh, excellent. Oh, you know what? There was one more slide. I forgot. Uh, I apologize. Where is it? Did I put it up here?
Thank you, Marcus. We appreciate that. More, the more people that watch, the more people that will be informed.
Yep.
And if you, if you just started watching us, this is our hundred and fifth episode. So if you want to catch up, feel free. But you have to go to YouTube to see them because every thirty days, they wipe out the ones off Facebook. So if you're going back to try to look there, you're not gonna find it.
And to Brian's point, this is the flyer that I thought I was going to, I had added already. But it is for Altadena Fathers only. It's free Father's Day baskets. It is tomorrow from twelve thirty to two thirty. Uh, plus a free barbecue plate includes two sides. Food that's available is barbecue chicken, hot links, hot dogs, potato salad, barbecue baked beans, cabbage with sausage, slice of bread and, and, and a drink. Again, it's located in. I know that's right.
I hope it's like wheat bread or a roll. Although I'm not a father, but.
Probably white bread.
Right. And, uh, it says it's just for Altadena Fathers only. So I'm, uh, assuming you gotta bring, bring some sort of proof of your residency. And uh, it says it's just for Altadena Fathers Only, so I'm uh, assuming you gotta bring, bring some sort of proof of your residency. So definitely wanna, you know, partake in that. But uh, shout out to the fathers. We'll, you know, if there's anything else I can find for the fathers, I'll, I'll definitely post that as well.
And what's that say that, who's doing the barbecue?
Uh, hold on, let me see if I can actually read it.
Johnson's Q, is that what it says? Cause Ju- Juicy, you know, she put her hand, I was like, cause you ain't gonna wanna miss this barbecue.
Oh, she put her hand up.
Remember in the video?
Yeah.
Okay. Like, okay, okay?
Right. So it is Johnson's Q. So I'm not familiar with them, but pretty sure it's gonna be good.
So just um, a reminder about Thursday, I'm posting on all our different Facebook pages, Altadena Talks, uh, Community, Beautiful Altadena. You know, all of them. Beautiful Legacy Altadena. But uh, if you have a question for the assessor, no questions have come in. But ask ahead of time if you can, so that they can just look at their data and have the exact information. And then I'm posting it to the groups now, because if somebody on the group wants, sees it and wants to ask, they can. But um, not that he will not interact and engage like we're doing now, because he will. But if he knows where the bulk of the question center, or what the thoughts of the people are, then he can get the data. And we want to try lasses or questions, uh, and we can.
Yeah, we want to take advantage of having these folks here and take advantage in a positive way, right? They are taking the time out and let's utilize their knowledge and uh, get the answers to the questions we have. Remember, it's altadinatalks.org forward slash LA asses or questions. Tried to say that with a straight face. It worked for two seconds after.
I'm not even watching it. I just heard it. It sounds funny.
LA assessor questions. That is sawing me, because that's what my brain read it as.
Cause we never would have said it.
Right. They would have just said LA assessor questions, but when I looked at it a couple of weeks ago, I was like, LA asses or questions?
Oh, yeah.
So um, good, 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 good conversation with Nick today. I definitely will bring him back on. I know he's the vice chair. Um, but yeah, it'll be. It'll be a, a great time then. And thank you all for everything you do. Thanks for the announcements. Did, did you? I know I was typing, did you talk about, and I don't think you did, because we talked about it yesterday, so I don't know if you saw it, but you can tell me. The deadline, which is today for unemployment.
I just filled mine out right before the show.
Oh, for the disaster. No, I didn't, but I can, I can put some, I'll put something up on the, on the uh, the, the groups, the group board, and I'll have something for uh, tomorrow.
I think I did put it up yesterday on the group board, and then we talked about it and just said, hey. Um, everybody, today, the tenth, is the last day to apply for disaster unemployment assistance. Unemployment assist- uh, insurance assistance. And then what was the other thing we talked about, Brian? Oh, the workshop that's going to be on Saturday at Loma Alta Park for the mortgage relief. Um, in our WhatsApp, Jamal, I put the things in there, but uh, we did share the link. I think I also put that on our Altadena Talks Community page yesterday. If not, we'll make sure we get it up today, you all. But um, that workshop for those that may qualify with the income threshold and their, their lender or their servicer is. Participating, if you have questions, bring all your documents, bank statement, I think ID, other stuff that they say. Um, mortgage statement maybe, which you could probably get online with your servicer and show up at Loma Alta Park. It's from ten AM to one PM. I believe, is it ten to one or ten to three? I forget. Anyway, ten to one on Saturday. So those two things, just because they are coming up, and I didn't know if they were added to the announcements, and I wasn't really listening to them, because I was typing and doing stuff. Just wanted to.
So this is a workshop related to the one announcement that I made.
Okay.
About the money that's gonna be paid for up to three months, up a maximum of uh, twenty thousand dollars. So uh, yeah, definitely. Uh, here, let me just put the workshop info up.
Yeah, so the work, sorry about that. The workshop is uh, direct correlation to that link where people can go and apply. And so the county is uh, Catherine Barker and the county is hosting this workshop. Where people can get help with the applications or have questions answered at Loma Alta Park on Saturday from ten to one. Um, unemployment insurance, EDD.ca.gov. You can go there and look under disaster or search under disaster unemployment. Insurance assistance. Today is the last day to apply for that.
Yeah, your password. Just put it in backwards. All right. There's this thing to download, so I can show it, but it's taking forever.
Oh, is that the, the movie?
No, no, I'm gonna show that live afterwards. You know, yesterday I had been up for thirty-five hours straight and I actually went to sleep.
Darn it, you got sleep? Who allowed you to do that, man? Come on.
A little bit, a little bit, a little bit. Yeah, but it was worth it. It was a five-hour nap is what it was. Cause I was after rest of the night. But I'm waiting for this download to finish, so that we can actually show you. Uh, what we're putting out for Thursday's show. I didn't get a chance to do Nick's, because I went to sleep yesterday. But I did do Jeff Prang's, and as soon as this ten seconds is over, or twenty, then I will post it up here. Yep, there you go. Okay. So that's.
Oh, a video or whatever.
Yeah, you know, just the one that we always put for uh, you call that um. The announcement for when we're telling, when we're letting people know somebody's important, somebody important is coming on.
Yeah. What the heck? That is so weird, the way that showed up. I don't like that. Uh-uh, I don't like that at all. I'm gonna delete that and redo the post. Anywho, so um.
And. Yeah, this might cut us all off. I don't know yet, but it's a twenty-second little, doesn't have any music, any things. I just did it. So I'm just, I'm uploading it to our page, so that, and that's what I'll be doing from now. So here we go. And there is what you will see on Thursday. Sorry, Jamal, I cut you out.
Nah, it's all good.
Uh, this is who we'll, this is how we'll be showing who comes on from now on, and then we'll post that on all of the groups. So that you know what to look forward to next. I think everyone has a lot of questions for this person. They just do not know. That they uh, can actually speak to them and say something. So there you go.
Add it back.
I like our new groovy music at the, at the end. I mean, during the show. Hey, yep, let's go.
Hey. There you go.
People of Altadena. Yeah. So uh, Tony, Jamal and I were messing around the other day. He played some music and I was just back in the background making up some blues type of stuff about Altadena.
Didn't we record it?
Yeah, we did. I'm not gonna play it yet. I gotta figure out which one is supposed to be the best one. Yeah.
Yeah, that was fun.
It was. Nah, I don't see it. Everything happened. I don't know.
So we good?
Yep.
I, I think we fresh to death. Yes, me.
Fresh, dressed.
Ready to party.
You know what I'm saying?
We're press, ready to party. What you gonna say?
Toodles.
Two dols.
Toodleoo.
Not three dols, but toodles.
No, zip it then.
Zip it then.
Let me tell you, y'all, y'all know what I did about one thirty yesterday? I went and sat in a jacuzzi for a good hour. I was falling asleep.
I'm jealous. I'm jealous.
Yeah, why are you bragging like that? That's.
I'm not bragging. I haven't been in it in a while.
That's all right, because I got a blow-up jacuzzi that I'm waiting for these pants to come, and I'm gonna put it together, and then I'm gonna go do the podcast from the jacuzzi.
Well, I was, I, I almost thought about doing it from there, but I'm like, nah, because I'd be too comfortable and drop my phone in there or something.
She'll be like, no, just get your selfie stick and just post it up right there.
I think it was two o'clock or two thirty. I was like, I haven't been out in my jacuzzi in, literally in a minute, a couple of months. And I was like, it's calling me and I'm tired. And I almost fell asleep.
It's calling me, man. It keep calling me.
Tired. I was like, huh.
Man, that sucker, you need to answer it like every day.
I know. I used to, always been it. And then I just, winter came, rain came. I don't get in, in the rain.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest that.
Right. Why I haven't before, as long as I'm in thunderstorm, anywhere near. I have gotten in, in the rain before. Cause I have cover and everything, but um, I was like.
I don't trust that.
I don't care that it's not night. I'm going out there right now. So, all right, well, anything else? Are we done?
Nope, just looking forward to way back Wednesdays tomorrow. It's all gonna be based on Schoolhouse Rock.
Ah, you got some stuff to talk about.
Where we actually learned how to, I learned about the government, how English language was performed, accounting.
Should we send that to the White House for some folks to, to pay attention to?
Should be on permanent repeat on certain people's phones.
Well, I'm just gonna say.
Like, I'm just a bill before I become a law. Not, I'm just an executive order overriding stuff.
Capitol Hill. They need to bring that back down.
They really do, because these kids, they had Animaniacs.
So much under that uh, on the, on the Electric Company with Morgan Freeman.
I had my kids watch Electric Company, Sesame Street and Mr. Rogers. And even though they were reruns, they were new to them.
Shoot, I used to watch Zoom too, because they used to do science projects.
Zoom, 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 I zoom.
Yep. I remember they had their little language, ababubby, dubabubby.
We're gonna show you why.
How about, how about you would do, dubably being?